Good afternoon, everybody. Just had lunch, so it's time to get down for a study session number two today. Remember, we're doing two to make up for last weekend and to make up for the Saturday's webinar, so I won't be doing a study stream on Saturday. Today, or right now, we're going to be doing some hand reading practice where we're going to range myself and see what my range looks like through the streets. We will also look into some lessons learned from a podcast interview with Jared Tendler on the Top Two Poker Cast, Poker Podcast. And then we'll see what I can take with me from what I learned into my next play session here. So we'll just go ahead and get started. First things first, let's find a hand. So remember this hand earlier, the pocket eights that we did in this morning session? I'm just looking, this is full ring and I'm looking at carbon hands as opposed to ACR hands. Pocket sevens, that's a tiny seven big blind pot. Bet, check, check, I don't want to range myself there. I mean, I could, bet, check, check means I'm pretty weak. Let's just go to the, go to the next position, something, some kind of bigger pot. The first one here is pocket kings. Okay, two pair, kings and fours. We got, hmm, let me see here, we raise pre, bet, check, bet. Oh, let's see why we check on that board right there. Let's see if that'll allow us to arrange ourselves. Oh, we just got a new follow, thank you very much. Hello there. Let me see. It didn't come in, I apologize, I didn't see your name. Just say something in the chat and I'll see that, uh, see that you followed there. Oh, dull geek, yep, yep, alright, thanks very much. Oh, hello again, dull geek, good to see you. So I guess maybe you got off of work or you're watching from work, I don't know. Whatever you're doing, dull geek, I appreciate you being here very much. While we're at it, let's send a quick note to the Facebook group. Let them know we're streaming. And the Twitter sphere. Rad, alrighty, good, good, watching from work, sweet. How do you get PT4 to show hands from both ACR and carb? Oh, very good question, dull geek, I appreciate that. So there's this button right here. Uh, it's called, I can't remember what it's called, oh, aliases. So you click on alias right here. I did it when as frisky, missky, and then I selected, you can add an alias, and I typed in wacky one. And then so what it did was it automatically connects frisky, missky with wacky one. So all of my 25 NL full ring or 25 NL six max, whatever it is, your stakes and the type of game, all those hands get merged so you can see them all together. Which makes it great, so you can play on multiple sites and you can keep track of all your progress. You can also, if you wanted to, when I look at settings like this, I see it's one or the other, exactly, yeah, so use the aliases. And, uh, what it said, I've never actually tried this myself. Game details, sites, okay, sweet. What you can do is we can look at just the merge network. Add that to filter, bam, so it's still frisky, missky, but now I'm only looking at merge hands by doing this right here. Yep, so you could do that from now on and you can have, I mean, you can set up all, if you're on five different sites, put them all into one, bam, they are. And then you can, like I said, you can, uh, see just one at a time. So it's like, it's not like merging your aliases screws with your stats and everything. You can still see them. So let's go back to saw showdown hands. That pocket kings. Yeah, so let's see why we check that turn. I'm hoping, I'm hoping I didn't check out of being scared. I'm hoping I checked to try to sucker the guy into slow play with a good overpair there. So we'll see. But, um, oh, like I said, we are looking at our range here today, not our opponents at our range. So we of course know that we have pocket kings and I'm opening from the cutoff. So we get a, what is this? Loose passive player on the button calling us. So let's not worry about his calling range. Let's think first about our, uh, our opening range right here. Nice and simple, two, actually, that's not what I use down here. My cutoff opening range is 20% and, um, when was this hand played? April 8th, yeah, yeah, I've recently started increasing my cutoff range. But this is also full ring, so most likely I'm just kind of playing a tighter game. I'm going to stick with this 20% range right here. And let's just give him a random, I don't know, he's just calling from the button. Let's look at his stats real quick. Forty-one nine, ah, he's super, he's super wide. So it doesn't really matter what we give him, let's give him ten-nine suited. It can be anything right now, it doesn't matter. What we're doing is ranging ourselves. And the reason why we arrange ourselves is because we want to see how all our actions kind of telegraph what hand we have. Maybe we are, uh, using bet sizing or check backs or raises just far too, we're using him in such a way that just opens our hand, like we're turning our hand face up to our opponent. We don't want that to happen. We want the plays that we make to be indicative of a nut hand or a bluff or a semi bluff or, um, or even a second pair hand, you know what I mean? We want our plays to kind of fool our opponent into thinking we could have something else. We don't want to bet, bet, bet strong every time we have that super good hand. Might want to check, maybe bet smaller to, to mix things up against our opponents. Make ourselves less predictable. So we arrange ourselves to see how predictable we are. So that's our range, we just give him a random hand right here. Let's take our range. Cut off, open with king, king. Button. Passive caller. We have our standard. Tag, cutoff range here. Which is, oh, let's get rid of these. Two hundred sixty-six combos at twenty point one percent. Yep, so like I've showed you before, this is just, uh, you get these forms from splitsuit.com/templates. They're pay what you want, just a donation. I gave him 10 bucks for these, uh, because splitsuit's a good guy and he's given me plenty of awesome content, stuff I've learned from over the years. So figured I'd repay, repay him a little bit. That was the date, right? The eighth? Four eight, good, we're good to go. Alright. So right now, doesn't matter what he has, let's just say he has ten-nine suited possibly. We don't know what the flop is, but at this point, we have a pretty strong range, fifty-eight percent over a weak suited connector like that. And flop comes four-ten-four? Oh, club heart and, uh, club spade heart. Great, so equity doesn't matter, I mean, he could have that, he could have queen, jack and diamonds. It, it doesn't matter, we're just giving him a random hand right now. But on this board, our range hits it. It actually hits it only twenty-one point nine percent of the time. This is what we call a chicken board. Chicken boards are tough to hit, it's a paired board, there's not many fours left in anyone's, in anyone's, uh, range, as well as, I mean, you need a ten or better to hit any kind of top pair. Everything below this is a mid pair, you just, it's really hard to hit this strongly. Not a lot of, not any good draws actually on a paired board. If this were down here, you could possibly have some gut shots and open enders or whatnot. But that is not the case right now. Okay, so on this board, we should fire, I would hope. So we're out of position right here, so we need to be firing. If he calls with some kind of a weak hair, weak pair, just a ten, even two overcards like king, queen or ace-ten. Ace-ten's not overcard, ace-ten is a pair, but ace-jack, uh, king-jack, queen-jack, we could be getting value from a lot of hands and he's super passive right here. So we bet and he just calls. So what are we betting on this board? We're betting our quads, four houses, I'm betting because he's so passive, I need to get value out of the guy, you know? So I would be betting my full house on the flop. If anybody's prone to calling, if they think you're bluffing, they're calling on the flop as opposed to the turn. Flops were where most calls happen, so against the fish, you've got to be betting for value. And like if he had that ten-nine like he, like we first said, he could easily be, uh, just calling down every street with a ten. Let's see here, three of a kind, we're betting, overpairs, we're betting, like we have here. Top pairs, I'm down for betting, pocket pair below top pair. He doesn't have many tens in his range, so I'd have to say that I would be betting the pocket pairs below top pair here. Either just trying to get value out of a hand that didn't hit a ten or, uh, basically that's it, I'd be value betting the pocket pairs below. And if he comes in for a raise, I'd have to reassess. Weak pairs at this point, those are, oh, the threes and deuces? I'm probably not betting those. Actually, I think I would on this chicken board, I think I would bet one street on the flop here out of position. So far, we see that he folds a hundred percent of the time, one out of one, yeah, I like the bet here. Ace highs. I like all those, we have an ace, if he has a king, we beat him currently. No made hands, those are all the, yeah, I'm good with betting those as well. Gut shots, overcards, well, we're already a hundred percent with all this stuff up here. Which I'm down for betting, I mean, it's a chicken board against a guy so far who's shown that he can fold the C bets. So I like the hundred percent right there. So... One hundred percent, after the board comes, it's actually two hundred and twenty-six combos because he's got a couple blocking cards, the board comes to block some of our stuff right there. So we have two hundred and twenty-six combos. On the turn, what happens, the seven of spades. Now, this right here, let's see, what does this do to things? Well, if he does have a pair of tens on this point, uh, he didn't pick up anything right there. We still have seventy-one percent equity. He's got one more street to catch us with two pair or trips or something. But our pocket kings is killer. But if we just take a look at our range here, thirty-one percent of our range hits top pair or better or a flush draw or an open and a straight draw. So we're doing pretty good here, thirty-one percent of the time, if we got here with our entire range. So let's see what happens. We are checking. Now, my guess is, I don't remember this hand at all, but I think a bet is in order to go for value. Now occasionally I'll play this way, but normally I'll save these kinds of plays for a player like this, uh, or even a player like this, somebody who's a little bit more aggressive, who when they see passivity, they might come in for a bet. Because right here generally, what I want to happen, as soon as I check this board, whoops, as soon as I check that board, I want, um, the rare man to come in for a raise, not, not a raise, a bet. I want to get value out of him. I want him to think that his ten is good, uh, that he's getting value out of me. I want him to think that he has a good flush draw, so he bets and I come in for a raise right here. Um, I'm going for max value with a check raise, but against such a fishy player, I think I should just be bet, bet, betting, uh, to get value out of the guy because he's probably calling with a wide range here and probably not raising unless he hits the nuts. If he has pocket tens and flopped a full house, then he'll be betting, we re-raise, and then he comes over with a re-raise and we get boned in the process. So, um, yeah, I don't, I don't like the check there for value or I don't like the slow play check there. I'd prefer a fast bet to get value out of the guy. So what am I checking? Am I checking my quads? I mean, the fact that I just now checked an overpair, uh, means that I could be checking all this other stuff too. Absolutely, so I'm checking all that stuff, checking top pair or two pair, checking my top pair hands. Yeah, absolutely, um, pocket pair below top pair. I like a bet with these, even on the seven, so I'm going to take that out of my checking range. Mid pairs, I'm often checking mid pairs. Weak pairs, I'm checking. Pocket pair, let me think about that, pocket pair below top, he called me. So if I think about my entire range here, he called me on the flop. I could easily put him on a ten, possibly a four and slow playing. So if I'm checking, I shouldn't be checking for value, so I'd be checking because I'm scared, right? So I shouldn't be checking these hands, I really shouldn't be. I should be betting those because he's got a ten. I'm hoping he has a ten and he's paying me off, you know? I should be betting my overpairs, I shouldn't be checking there, that should be out of my range. Because for optimal play, I mean, my goal when I'm playing against fish is to make money. Betting is how I make money against fish, not checking and hoping they come in for a bet. You know, that's terrible play. I wouldn't be checking top pair either, I would be checking pocket pair below. Ace highs, I could easily be checking, I'm a terrible double barreling out of position. I don't, I don't like that with just an ace high, you know? No made hand, could be checking there as well. Remember, this is a fish after all, I can expect a call if I often bet. So I don't want to bet if I think that he, uh, continues on the flop with any kind of pair and I don't have a pair. So I want to check, check the no flush draws. Whoops, no, no. Yeah, so I'm checking like eighty percent of my range, I'm only raising with the best stuff out of my range. Eighty point four, one hundred and seventy-six combos. Now see, the thing that's tough about this is, in fact, I checked with pocket kings, but really, and looking at this hand, I shouldn't have. I should have kept betting. That's why like you might think to yourself, you might be saying, hey, Sky, you've got to keep that in your checking range because you checked. Well, yeah, but I made a mistake in checking. So what I should be doing with the overpairs is betting. So that's why I'm filtering it like this, right there. Hundred seventy-six. So this is my new range. Yep, I screwed that one up right there. So I mean, even if we put him on a ten right now, um, our range still beats him because, uh, yeah. No, our range, oh, no, I, I took out all the stronger hands. Our range is not good anymore versus his hand, if he does have a ten right here, ten-nine suited. So I think I really, well, I mean, I guess the good thing about this is I totally disguised my hand. So if I'm looking at my range, I do not have anything better than top pair in my range. So, um, if I bet, he could raise me and I can call on the river, making him think that, you know, he's not going to assume I have the kings, which is good. But at the same time, I'm playing against a fish, I shouldn't be doing, I shouldn't try to get fancy against a fish. Against fish, you just go for value, you can get fancy against regs and good players. Nine of clubs comes. We botched it, maybe he has two pair now if he has a ten-nine with our kings. But on that flop right there, oh, ten, oh, we got to give him a different ten. Or a ten-nine. Good, okay, so in this instance right here, let's see what happens. Given our range, what are we betting here? The range that hits, um, yep, I guess we're betting a top pair hand, a bad two pair, what is that? Oh, nine-seven. Middle pair, yeah, I don't like betting the middle pair even. I would often just check right here and hope to see a free cheap river. Bad two pair, I could bet the bad two pair. Weak pairs, nope. And so that's it, so I've effectively narrowed my range to really crappy top pair hands and some two pair stuff. I mean, yeah, I've taken my range because of my plays. So what am I getting value here? So if I'm betting on this, if you look at my range as a whole, uh, my bet looks like a bluff, definitely. He should be calling with, with any pair, a ten, a nine, maybe not a seven, but any first or second pair, he should be calling with right here. Because my range looks so weak because I checked back, not checked back, checked that turn right here. So he should be calling, which I guess I disguised my hand and I'm getting value out of a lot of pair hands right here, which is good, but in general, I don't think it's the right way to play against a fish. If I would have bet the turn, let's say, with that half pot bet, if I would have bet the turn, um, it would be an eight dollar, over eight dollar pot right now, uh, eight-seventy. And then if I would have bet just half pot again, it would have been an additional, um, you know, uh, eight-seventy, uh, seventeen-twenty. The pot size would have been seventeen-twenty right here, um, instead of eight, eight-seventy would have been double that. So I would have made, I would have made a lot more money. Actually, I don't, yeah, I did make money in this hand. What a shame, so my final range is a miserable eight hands, very small, four point seven-nine. But the good thing about this is I've disguised my hand and at least I've made some money, whereas maybe he would be, um, maybe he would be folding a lot of hands that if I had bet the turn, uh, that he wouldn't have been, uh, wouldn't have been calling here. Tiny range. My turn check, really. Disguised my hand, but... I could have made so much more had I bet against the fish. Yep, yep, would have made so much more. Uh, let's see here. Ace-ten, yeah, so look at that, he guaranteed he would have called flop, turn and river. Instead of the eight-seventy pot, it could have been a seventeen-forty in the pot. Could have made double the money right there because I missed out on that turn bet. Man, shouldn't slow play. Don't slow play the fishies. Yep, yep, I screwed the pooch there. Alright, well, I think my play successfully disguised my hand, but I successfully cost myself money. What a shame, alright, so now let's take a look here, um, the other thing. Okay, the other thing we're going to do today is lessons learned from a podcast interview with Jared Tendler on the Top Two Poker Podcast. Bike King the other day, or yesterday, as I was preparing for this week, he told me about this podcast, I did a little Google search and I found it right here, downloaded it and listened to it. Pretty good stuff. The first twenty minutes or so were just fluff. There's some history about Jared Tendler and some jokes and whatnot. Uh, I already knew the history, so the first twenty minutes was a waste. If you've heard Jared Tendler on podcasts and stuff before or read his book, you just don't need to listen to the first twenty or so. But then they came in with a question from a listener named Dennis and he asked a question about not being able to make... Let's close this and make it bigger. He asked a question about not being able to make the aggressive plays that he knows are profitable, but he just can't pull the trigger on. Later, when reviewing the session, it's clearly obvious what the right play is and he wants to know how he can overcome this problem. And then Jared Tendler responds with a great answer, you know? He talks about this is some sort of fear getting in the way, which makes sense. I mean, you, you have a read on your opponent, you have a read on the situation, but something is preventing you from pulling the trigger, from clicking that button, from making the three bet, making the C bet, whatever it is, and it's probably fear. He, as in Dennis, knows what the correct play is, but fear of something is preventing his mind from acting and putting into play the correct strategies. Fear's blocking him from acting as he should. And in Jared Tendler's book, um, chapter six, page one fifty-five is all about fear. And I remember the first time I read this chapter right here, um, you can see I've made a ton of notes in the book. Lots of underlines, lots of notes and stuff. That was an eye-opening chapter for me. Because prior to reading this, if you would have said, Sky, do you have any fear at the table? I would have said, no, no fear at all, you know, I just, I play poker, I see a situation and I make the correct decision. But after reading that and then after assessing my actual play, paying attention to game tape, really thinking and assessing honestly my play, I realized that yes, I do play from fear sometimes, I don't want to lose, I don't want to look like a fool. I don't want to make the three bet bluff, uh, when it might not work or, or whatever the case is. And so that's what this question is all about, you know? This is a problem of mine, I love this chapter from the book and I'll reread it tonight, definitely going to reread the chapter. I need to get to the root of my own fear and Tendler says it's often has a root in your confidence or lack thereof. Fish are overconfident in their skills, they think they're so good, they play the eight-five suited, they play the nine-four suited, the jack-three offsuit, they play that stuff because they think they can either hit or they could think they can take advantage of their opponent and, uh, you know, steal the pot away, uh, post-flop. But I may be just the opposite and I think I'm worse than I am. Maybe I'm worried that I'm misreading something in the moment and I don't want to be incorrect in my play and to lose a hand or lots of money because of it. So I think I do suffer a bit from fear. I need to approach my play sessions without any expectations of what will happen. My goal needs to be just to make the best decision possible and let the chips fall where they may. And Jared Tendler talks about that. When we go into a session expecting or even just hoping, you know, I want to be three by ends up today, as soon as you're up a little bit and then you encounter a situation that might cost you your winnings or if you're break even for, you know, thirty minutes and all of a sudden the situation comes that looks like you might be losing chips, that fear of losing could come from having high expectations in the first place. So don't have those expectations, just expect that you're going to play your best and, you know, decide to make the best decisions in every moment. By doing that, um, fear might be less of an issue and this might be the case for me, so it's something I'm going to work on for sure. Tendler also said something really interesting. In high-pressure situations, it's C game versus C game. And, uh, the players who have the best ability to get beyond their flaws and make necessary corrections and choices in the moment are going to be winning most of the time. And he talked about this in relation to making like a giant final table, like a televised final table. All the pressure's on you, everybody's watching and they're critical of your plays. As soon as you bluff and get called, they're going to see that, you know, you made a bad bluff or whatever the case is. You don't want to appear to be an idiot on national TV. Well, that's a high-pressure situation. And when you're under high pressure, that's when your pressure, that's when your emotions start to overflow and your emotions start to hijack your higher reasoning, your logic centers. And then when that happens, you'll just revert right to your C game. If the opponents at the table are feeling the same thing, they'll be in their C game too. It's just C game battling versus C game, whoever has the best C game might win. But at the same time, for those who have worked hard to get beyond their C game limitations and have worked hard to, um, uh, in situations like where fear is present, they work to get beyond the fear and get back to their logical choices and stuff, those players who are best at that are going to come out on top in those situations. So it's kind of a good thing when you do experience some fear or your emotions start to increase, if you're cognizant of it, if you pay attention, that is your time to shine. That's your time to say, hey, I have this fear under control, I can make good decisions while I am, uh, under these high-pressure situations. And then you put yourself in those situations, not really put yourself, but when you're in those situations, you recognize it and you work through it. The more you do that, uh, the better you'll become at it, the less that C game will affect you, the less those emotions will affect you, the less the fear will affect you and you'll be making better choices and better plays and making more money for it. So that's some important stuff that he talked about, it was a really good podcast, I definitely recommend you check it out. And here's an action step I, I took away from this. I want to create a hand tag called shouldn't, should bet but didn't. So I can mark hands where I know a three bet or a C bet or a raise first in is good, but out of some sort of fear, I'm not able to pull the trigger. So let's do that real quick, you'll go up to configure and then tags. Let's add a tag, I think it all has to, yeah, it all has to be one word. Should bet but didn't. I can't think of a very good word for that. I'm fearful often when this happens, so let's put the unhappy face as this tag. Should bet but didn't. Actually... Let's give it a, a symbol. Wait, I can't do that, there's a review right there. Should bet but didn't. Oh. I see, no. Excuse me, ah, forget it, I'll just leave that as is. So as I'm playing a hand, for example, this hand right here, interesting, what a perfect, what's going on, close, okay. What a perfect time, so on this hand, I could easily assign it a tag, should bet but didn't. So it could be for, I could use this tag at times when, um, I'm reviewing a hand and I realize I should have bet like on the turn, I should have bet for value as opposed to checking. Or it can be other times as I'm playing and I experience fear or anxiety and I know that a three bet is in order, but I didn't make it because I'm scared to lose chips. So that's what this can be, um, so let's see. Tag it. There we go, okay, it's tagged now, good. So at any time, what I can do is under more filters here. Oh, hand is tagged as should bet but didn't. So that's the problem, okay, let's do this. Clear filter. It might be the fact that I have an apostrophe, that might be what is screwing with things. Sweet, there it is. So now at any time I can go back through and take a look at all the different hands where I should have bet but didn't, right there. And so there we go, now I have for my action step, my new hand tag is in. Alrighty, um, so, uh, the podcast went on and the second question came in from Pipes, which who is Andrew Piper, and he actually listens to my podcast, so if I've communicated with him in the past. Really good guy, Andrew Piper, if you're listening, hello. So he asks about how to set healthy achievable goals, and this is some great stuff that Tendler talked about. Goals are player dependent, you want to sit out and map how much time you want to play and you want to study. You know, when it comes to poker, you can also make financial goals and Jared Tendler talks about that in the episode. But he recommends that you set short-term goals to see how you achieve it. So often times, um, like Chase Mianke, the, one of the hosts on the podcast, he set a goal for twenty seventeen to make two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the year. That sounds like a really big achievable goal. If he's never set financial goals like that before, that is a crazy big amount and a full year duration. Well, when you're first starting out and setting goals, you don't know how to do it, you should set shorter terms, you know? Let's set a goal for the next month, this is the end of April. So let's set a goal maybe for two weeks and let's make this amount of money in the next Let's set a goal for the next month, this is the end of April, so let's set a goal maybe for two weeks and let's make this amount of money in the next two weeks. And at the end of the timeframe, you'll assess how well you made or you'll assess the progress you made towards your goal. And then determine, hey, that was great, it went well, let's make a new, a new goal for three weeks or a full month. Um, so start small and build big. Uh, don't push yourself like a crazy amount, go for gradual increases. It's very disheartening to make a huge goal then come nowhere near it. Start small, complete the timeframe you set for yourself, then assess how well you did. Move your goal up and down depending on how well it went. You can even set a range of, I'm sorry, you can even set yourself a goal range. Your goal is to aim for 8K in profit, but you'll be happy with 4K, so set that ahead of time. My goal for this month is between 4 and 8K. If I get closer to 8K, great, I'll take the wife out to dinner. Uh, if I get closer to 4K, great, I'll buy her McDonald's, whatever the case is, you know? Uh, so set, set, set a range of goals if you need to. Uh, setting monetary goals can also help you to find some flaws in your game and mental game as you go after your goal. So oftentimes, when we set hands, played goals, tournaments, played goals, monetary goals. If we don't come near, if we come so close to it, or if in pursuit of our goals, we start playing terribly and losing a lot of money. That is a really good chance to look into, uh, look into why that's happening. Why are we losing a lot of money? Why are we making bad decisions? Why are we, uh, playing our c-game all the time? Why are we really going after this goal? Is it really a goal that we want to go after? So setting those financial goals and not hitting them is a great chance for you to dive in and figure out what is going on with your game. And, um... Wait a second, Pipes, you're Bike King? Are you kidding me? That's awesome, I, I did not realize that. My bad. I'm just gonna ask a quick question. Really? I had no idea. That is so sweet, yeah, Bike King is a Twitch streamer, huh, that's so funny. Well, now I know Bike King, thank you very much for watching. Uh, thanks also for streaming my show on, my show on your channel or whatever it's called. Um, I'll, I'm gonna do the same for you too, once I figure out how to do it, thank you very much. Oh, that's so funny. Bike, hey, no wonder you mentioned the podcast, you were the one that told me about this podcast and you were the one on it, nice. Giving yourself a question plug, eh? Haha, that's so funny, awesome Pipes, well, thank you very much, um. Uh, so Andrew, uh, one of the hosts of the show, he went on and he made a good point of goals push you to work hard. Back when poker was much easier, players would forego playing because there's always another game tonight or tomorrow. Lots of pros lament over not playing more while the money-making was easier. Don't be like that, set goals, push yourself and strike while the iron's hot. He made a really good point when he, uh, uh, you know, followed up Jared Tendler's comment with his... Yeah, exactly, self-promotion hype, nice dude. Uh, okay, so, uh, the last thing, the host asked, I can't remember which host, asked Jared Tendler a question. Who are good candidates for mental game coaching? Uh, in case anybody out there wants to work on their mental game with a coach like Jared Tendler or, or whoever, you know? Elliot Rowe or Patricia Carden. Um, he says basically somebody who, somebody who is motivated to improve. And what I take that to mean is basically anybody who, uh, wants to work hard to improve their game, whether it's actual poker skills or their mental game, whatever it is, it's time for a coach when you wanna work hard. Coaches really push you to work harder, they give you some accountability, they ask you about how your play is going. They give you tips and techniques and strategies, but then they're also interested in helping you improve. So they'll answer your questions and they'll talk about whatever you wanna talk about, go through your database, find your leaks, help you out and all that stuff. If you're motivated to improve, a coach is definitely just, it's the right time, it doesn't matter what level you are. You could be a top-notch player, one of the best in the world, but somebody above you, uh, could possibly be your coach. Or just, you know, Jared Tendler, somebody in the mental game space could be your coach if you're that good. If you're at the very bottom rung and you've never played a hand of poker before, but you wanna get in there and start learning and play right from the start, great. If you're eager to do it, do it, get a coach, it doesn't matter your level. Um, and then currently for Jared Tendler, they fill out that same questionnaire that we filled out earlier, uh, in the morning session. And then the sessions with him begins. So, uh, yeah, that was it, that was that podcast, I really recommend you check it out, I had that up on Stitcher right there, I also found it on iTunes. You know, the Top 2 Poker Podcast, you could find it anywhere podcasts are available, these guys know their stuff. They're a good podcast, I used, I listened to a while ago, but I got out of it. But I subscribed and I'll be listening to them again from this point forward. They've actually, this is the third, this is the third podcast in a series of podcasts where they're just all hitting the mental game. You know, the first one was talking about just, whatever, I won't tell you about it. If you wanna search it out and learn more about the mental game, these guys, uh, did three great podcasts on it so far that I recommend checking out. Alrighty, well, uh, thank you very much everyone for attending today, I am going to get to chapter six, fear, on page 155 in Mental Game Poker. I'm gonna read that, I'm not gonna read it here in front of you, that'd be a little bit too boring. I guess I could read it and recite it to you word for word, but nah, I'm not gonna do that, I'm gonna read it off the, off the stream. Uh, so thank you very much, I'll see you all tomorrow morning, if you are subscribed to the emails, you'll be getting an email from me pretty soon. Um, recapping the two sessions today, alrighty, take care. And then Pipes, thank you very much for, uh, for, uh, for being a part of the stream here, I really appreciate it. Thanks for this recommendation on the podcast, on this podcast as well. I appreciate that, man, alrighty, y'all take care, have a good day.